Monday, May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, regular session at Anamosa City Council, City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich?
Here.
Kay?
Here.
John?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Cody?
Here.
Two point oh pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, April twenty second, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. Any additions or? All those in favor signify by? Saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Four point oh public hearings, none. Five point oh presentations, none. Six point oh proclamations, none. Council action items, seven point oh community betterment. Seven point one discussion and possible action on third reading of ordinance amending chapter seventy-four of the city code golf carts and UTVs and chapter seventy-five of the city code ATVs and snowmobiles to one, separate the regulations of golf carts from the regulations of UTVs. Two, separate, separate the regulations of ATVs from the regulations of snowmobiles. And three, merge the regulations of ATVs and UTVs.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Kay. It's a roll vote.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Seven point two discussion and possible action on request for tax and finance by Eagleview Land Development for planned commercial development on Chamber Drive.
How's it going?
Not too bad. How are things going for you?
The sun's shining. Finally. Now we just don't know what to do first.
It all needs done yesterday.
It all needs done yesterday. So, I assume everybody's got a copy of what we're proposing to do and stuff out there?
I believe so.
So, I guess. See if they've got any questions on it necessarily or?
There's two options in a sense before us, correct Bryce? How long you anticipate development of the completion of the entire project?
One year.
One year.
Yeah. Basically, we're looking to, uh, put the, the three buildings up. I have not got a final answer yet from Wes who he's gonna do that one. I should know tomorrow, yes or no, but the other three buildings are gonna go out at the same time. So like I say, I did the two options because back when, uh, when Pav is here and we did some stuff like Remley, McQuillan's Law Office and Metal Ridge Eight, we did them as, we did them as TIP grants and the only, it doesn't really matter to me either way, but it's, uh, the city gets it back on the tax rolls two years sooner if they go with a grant because the city can bond it cheaper than I could pay tomorrow. So it becomes the same value to the project. It's just where it takes me longer to pay back the interest, the city's interest savings should pay back about two years faster. And like what we did on, uh, where the law office is down there, we guaranteed that, we set that up to where the TIP paid out payments. So, we set it up so it was guaranteed that the city couldn't give a grant out and there be a chance there wouldn't be a building, you know? So it was just an agreement. We build a building, they get the grant and that was, so it's either ways not a risk. It'd be more Jacob looking at if there's a effect that matters to borrowing capacity or how the bonds and stuff look, but to us either way it works. You know, it's basically who holds the paper, so it doesn't matter to, doesn't matter to me. So.
Regardless of if someone wants this foresight or not, you are gonna put a building there if tha- that individual is in or out?
You mean as far as like the buyer?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, these are gonna go.
So it'll be four buildings no matter what?
Three buildings no matter what.
And with?
If Wes doesn't go, we probably, there won't be any points of that building that it joins his land.
That's on lot four?
That would be lot four, it's the small one.
Doesn't that become parti- kind of particular to what we're going to possibly adopt?
It would, it would shift.
It would affect the total dollar amount.
Yeah, it would affect the dollar amount, but.
It wouldn't necessarily affect the timeline in terms of years.
Okay.
Yeah, it would just affect the, the value of what's there. So, his was a cold storage shed, but like I say, if we take it off, it basically takes that fourth line of value off that was in the proposal, so. Doesn't change the concept at all, and then if everything goes good in the future, it's a spot that there could be another contractor bay that would get put in there, but you know, once everything's kind of rolling and, I think it'll be good, um. I kind of, I've watched this lot for a lot of years as it's come down in price from when Humplehead to Tarham to Delancey, you know, each one kind of took a hit off of it and then when it came up, this was kind of the idea I had, get a couple buildings that we could get businesses into up off Chamber and then this contractor base, they're basically thirty by fifty with an overhead door in it, bathroom in the back corner just somewhere. I mean, it could be anyone, it could be a, could be an electrician, could be a small contractor, it could be a lawnmower. You know, just a place, there's really no good place in town for someone that has a small business to rent a space, you know, to have a shop or a little office to do their, do their thing with. We've been working, uh, we met with Jacob, Jacob's been working with me on it for a few months now. We kind of laid out the plan and then, uh, or kind of laid out what we, what we're proposing, talking about last fall and then
Okay.
we got Randy Williams is, uh, working right now. He's drawing the concepts that we handed out. And then, uh, or I think, did y'all get the concept plan? Okay, so yeah, so it's, uh, right now he's working on the site plan to bring up and that way since, like I say, since we kind of talked about it, we just thought it was time to probably get in a sudden council and kind of ask Jacob if we could, you know, get an intent vote to enter in the proceeding with working it out, so basically so I could order the buildings. Because those metal buildings and, uh, erector, I want to get those on schedule before, uh, it gets too late in the year. Cause I think it's important, well, it's important to me, I think it's important to everyone that if something's happening out there, let's get it put up.
So if you don't go with lot four, um, will it still remain a lot then, even though it has no frontage?
Can't really be a lot.
Right.
It could be a parcel that could have it, it could still be a parcel that would have an agreement to it. It would just either have to go with Wes or it would have to go with lot three. But it would make it able to carry its own if it ever did a building on it either way. Cause it's gonna be kind of limited what.
Right.
In my view, from my standpoint in the cities, if we have that partial yet to where that could be developed and have its development agreement, even if it was a couple of years behind, it's, uh, it's worth the effort to have the possibility there of building a building that in, you know, twelve years would be on the tax rolls, so. Are you taking my picture?
Yeah, I was, I can, I can access everything on my computer, my phone, but not my iPad, so it's all good. Um, I have a question for you though before I take your picture. Is I, am I right? So you're gonna have two different separate TIP things going on out there?
Three or four.
Three or four.
Well, I guess that depends, the one thing that does depend on that would be if we enter in the type of agreement.
Yeah.
Because from the way I would look at it, if we ended up with a grant that the city carried the loan on and then gave us once the buildings were up and ready, we got the money, that would just be one because it's gonna be one project, so there wouldn't be individuals to go with. The thought was if we go into a TIP rebate scenario, then we, uh, do individual development agreements. That way, if a business or an individual buys one of these properties for their business, it would transfer to them and that would be the help for them. So basically, it's either gonna get priced down with the help, or else it's gonna be a rolling development agreement that they would get the TIP rebate back.
So my question, and Tammy, maybe you can help with this, is I was trying to remember, um, when we did some TIP training with Pat Callahan and there was an incident where we pulled property out of a TIP and combined it with another third TIP because you couldn't have it separate, is that? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I, I understand the principle of what you're saying, I know that the rules change all the time. I don't know what the current rule is on that.
Okay.
That'd be a question for John Anos.
This property is the big bucks. This property s- exists, sits in an existing TIP district, so we wouldn't have to create one.
Okay.
And I don't think there's ever been any use of TIP on this piece of property, so it's, it's a little bullseye.
Okay.
If you could clear, clarify something Bryce. So if we make this three, possibly four lot project.
Yeah.
TIP. And someone comes in, wants to purchase one of the buildings you have constructed. The TIP carries over, or they could be asking for an additional TIP on the purchase from you?
The TIP carry, that's, if we do the rebate, it carries over to them. If we do the grant, I'll price the building down. Like say, like if lot two is a three hundred thousand dollar property, if we got the TIP grant, basically the grant could would go towards that, we would take off that price so that someone could come in and buy it more economically, but they would be paying taxes immediately. Otherwise, they would buy it up at the three hundred and then they would, they would get, uh, development agreement transferred to them and then they would get the TIP rebate while they're, you know, while you got small businesses starting to make its payments, should have a good share and then in twelve years it comes on the tax rolls from there on, so.
So it's a true partnership, all parties win, win?
Yeah. Yeah, well, it, it gives, it gives an opportunity for a place, you know, to gain some momentum. You know, basically you're ending up with a spot for anywhere from eight, nine businesses, small businesses may have a spot to, and I look for like that six unit, it's gonna be, um, you guys all need to be on the same side of the room. But, uh, no, it's be, you know, six units and those will probably stay rental type units just because the nature will be you get a company that can get going for a while, they'll probably grow out of it, or it might be someone that is comfortable with that for a while, it's just, you see them in every community, they're building those contractor type buildings and they're always full, so. My, I'm pretty positive on the idea, there's probably a little bit of nervousness, you know, of the idea of putting up that big building like that to do it, but, uh, like I say, I think it's, it's worth putting in town here to, you know, if we don't have it, we can't say it doesn't work either.
I would love to interject, um, so I have several people, hold on.
You need to come up with.
Can I even stand?
Yeah.
Oh gosh, okay. This is my first rodeo, it's me and Heather Warren. We have many people wanting to come, uh, find a space, there's a lot of people that would love to be on, you know, Main Street, small town, um, USA, but everything needs so much work and a lot of them just don't have that, don't have the ability, the capacity to just make a clean slate, do the fixes and, um, turn it into what they need it to be, uh, Bryce's plan and his, uh, you know, thoughts if somebody does need to lease it or whatever. Very reasonable and affordable and be a beautiful space, the, I know the, the contractor bay is metal, but the two front buildings.
One of them's gonna be metal, one of them's gonna be metal and the other one will probably be, it's either gonna be metal or wood frame. We got interest in both, so the, the one we have very, the one we have very serious interest in, the metal one. And then, uh, so if that's the case, it might be we do another metal one, otherwise we were looking at doing a wood frame that was two or three offices. So we had a couple, or Heather's had a couple people that are interested in renting the space in that building that are looking for, one's a local business that wants to get a little better visibility and expand and then we had another one that's just someone looking to start something up, so.
A lot of, um, good, positive excitement around, um, getting some newer spaces built and, um, kind of that's, that's a nice little area. Lots of people in the area.
And it's not far off one fifty one, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's kind of a hidden gem for the moment, you know, once Chamber goes through later this year and connects and it, it also finishes that area up too.
And I, we get that Heather, when you put your entire life savings into trying to get business up and going and now you have a building you've got to invest in to get it and it takes months, you're sitting there not having that end up, income coming in right away where, in this situation, quicker turnaround.
So you're all right with either, uh, tax increment or a grant?
Yeah, I don't really care which.
Okay.
Um.
So we can look at it on our end and see what works best for us?
The only reason I really present it is because it's more home, hometown and like I say, I know that was always the reason, just to get it on the tax rolls. Um, it's not gonna affect me and marketing or the project, whether it's the, the TIP or the grant. That pretty much comes back to what works out for you guys. I say, my goal was as a community member would be more to see it get on the tax rolls sooner if it's, you know, but it's, that's up to you guys, I mean Jacob has to know it, what you guys is, you know, if it puts much strain on your debt capacity or anything else. So. That's why he sits in the chair out there. He'll probably just tell Tammy to figure it out anyway, so. He's always yelling at Tammy for your stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I, it, it's a good project and it, I agree, I think we add some momentum to, uh, maybe it's more commercial development and maybe even spur some, uh, rehab in our existing buildings, but, uh, I guess I kind of typically lean towards the rebates, but, uh, in this case it may, may work where it makes more sense to go with the grant. I'm gonna talk more with our bond attorney and get his thoughts on it, but if we can pair it up with another project, uh, it might allow us to get really good interest rates and then it's, uh, even better deal for us, so.
So before, and I know it's, um, discussion and possible action, do we need to wait until you visit for?
So we've got nothing, we don't have any agreement to approve tonight, really just a discussion, I think, to get general feelings on things. Um, if you want to take a motion, kind of in favor of it, of the project, that's fine, that would probably be good, um, but, uh, there's kind of work to do on my end with, with bond attorney getting that, an agreement and the details put together, but.
Is this grant thing something new that you just brought up tonight, or have you and Jacob talked about this before?
The grant is just, it, it's still a TIP, it's just giving, instead of, instead of, um.
The main reason, or go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, we just, uh, essentially we give the money out at the front end and then we have the debt where when we collect that tax revenue every year, it goes towards that bond, whereas the rebate, uh, we essentially owe the developer that money and when we get the tax money every year, we send it directly to them. So it's just another way of doing it, puts the borrowing on our, on our end rather than his end.
The difference would, the difference would be, um, if you do that upfront, you'd want to do a development agreement to put some value on.
Right, we would have a, uh.
Upfront, so your, the risk would be a little less.
Guaranteed assessment so that, so that we know the tax value is gonna come back and pay off the loan. We don't want to give, uh, you know, a million dollars and then come back and have an assessment that's, doesn't, doesn't match that. So we can put that in the agreement with the, the guaranteed assessment is, if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet, then we just crank down our proportion to accommodate.
It's kind of, the main reason that I even mentioned it here was just because we were looking at four different agreements, so it turns into more paperwork.
The, the grant is easier on that end, yeah.
Um, from our end, it doesn't matter to me either way, the grant's probably a little easier for people to understand down the road than, you know, that, than that the building costs less than, you know, it's easier to show people that they're getting the taxes back for that period over, you know, say, okay, we got this grant, so we, we majored three hundred thousand dollar building, two hundred and sixty or whatever it would be, you know? So, it doesn't, I say, it's easy, I don't really care, I can make either one work, so I'm passing one that way.
Well, I make a motion that we move forward with this and have Jacob, when you come back, I'd like to see a spreadsheet, option A, this is the timeframe and the payback, and option B and C, like I would love to see it all laid out in side by side comparison.
Sure.
When, when would you know on the fourth, the fourth building?
I'll probably know in the next week, because I have to let Randy know, because I want to keep, I want to keep drawing, so.
I'll sign the motion.
First by Betty, second by Cody. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thanks guys.
Yeah Bryce.
Hopefully you see a plan here in the next month.
Alright.
Alright, thanks guys.
Yeah Bryce.
You too.
Thanks Heather.
Be good. Stay yourself.
Seven point three discussion and possible action on fire station expansion project.
So, been working with Chief Shada and, um, engineers to come up with a plan for this project and I, I think we're at least close, um. We cut back from our last discussion as much retaining wall as we can without spilling over into adjacent properties with the grading. And brought the price down pretty significantly, um.
So it was determined we could not go without a retaining wall?
If you wanted to, uh, you'd have to come up e- either with some agreement with the adjacent property owner or purchase property to do it. Just because the, again, it would run, run to the south, uh.
Can I do this?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm, this is kind of new to me all of a sudden, who's, who's the adjacent property that we have to get rid of?
I believe it's Shakers.
Shakers? Cause I thought we had talked that there was, was an alley running still between
Yeah, and it.
where our, where my sixty foot was and their property.
Yep, and it, the grading that they're showing, if without a retaining wall at all, it's go past that alleyway and, and work onto, uh, the Shakers property, so. I think there's like a concrete pad there in that corner, it would run across that area.
Okay, that's, like I said, this, that's kind of new to me then, since last time we talked. I did visit with Jerry Rogers and gave him the set of the, the plans that I had and he did come back with a, with a concrete bid for me, um. I planned out until I saw this information, I find I'm coming to see you tomorrow about that, but I do have a concrete plan from him. So that's probably gonna change his deal then, unless we can come up with an agreement with, with Shakers, because that was the sixty by, I think we originally talked sixty by one twenty-four. Those are dimensions.
Yep, that was the original dimensions, uh, that, we, we discussed going down to the fifty foot wide to bring the cross, the price down. Um, so I think that's where we're sitting right now.
Um, can I ask who you discussed that with, just so I have the, have all the information?
Just, just with you and the engineers.
Okay.
I mean, we, yeah.
Well, I.
Not that that's set in stone.
No, and I, and I recall that we had, we had discussed it, um, I didn't know anything was, was, had been decided on.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not decided, I guess, I'm just trying to, yeah, work through it.
Yeah, sure, no, sure, sure. Uh, I did discuss it with Sean a little bit, um, on changing the size of it. And in his mind at that time, unless we went considerably shorter, that little bit wouldn't, wasn't gonna make a whole lot of difference, so. You know, then I just guess I'm still gonna need to get back with him then. Cody, can I ask, is that something that we can discuss with you, or does that need to be discussed with Mike and Nancy?
Oh, yeah, because it's a corporation, so.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that was.
Yeah.
How that land was purchased down there, so.
And I would like to see the two options, like I'm in agreement with what you're saying, but I also get where, um, Jacob's coming from. Because when you have an agreement with adjacent landowners, that's fine, but that landowner don't always own that land forever. You later than have somebody else come purchase that property. So I think to cover ourselves upfront and keep from having to be in that position, that that's okay and looking into, that's one thing. The second thing I would like to ask is, is this something that would have to, like the concrete work would have to go out and be bided? I mean, I get you talk to Jerry and I think they're great, I love them, but the bottom line is for where the city comes from, it's almost like you have to put it out for bid anyway, correct, and sealed bid.
Yeah, that would, I mean, the concrete would have to be a subcontractor on, on the general, and I mean, I've, uh, it is great that they want to provide a good cost.
Be like any other project, you would bid through the engineering firm.
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah. And just for clarification, that, so the, the preliminary, uh, opinion of cost that I put in your packet had, again, the minimal amount of retaining wall to keep the, the grading on our property and that was just over six hundred thousand. The cost with no, no retaining wall and grading on to the Shakers property was five hundred and seventy-six. The cost with no no retaining wall and grading on to the Shavers property was five hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. So it's about twenty-five thousand dollars less, but then you've got. Having to figure out how that affects that adjacent property and. I mean that, I I mean.
Now, is this, is this gonna encroach on their property, or we're just gonna be running back and forth on their property to do this construction?
It it would add dirt to their property and to make to make the grade work, so it would be changing the depth.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And we don't want the same problem we have up in Chamber Court, where all of a sudden we've got people having runoff issues, water issues, you know what I mean?
Sure.
It's, everything's fine until we actually build there and then five, ten years later, we're sitting here with people not happy. That's so, I'm kind of in favor of being more precautious up front.
So this would really only be putting a retaining wall on the. South side of the property?
Uh yeah, that south corner.
And then like the west corner of the southwest corner of the fire station or the new addition?
Yeah, it would be on southwest corner, um is where that would go. It's a little bit hard to see in the. Pretty far down the hill I believe, um in the map that has the wall on it. Yeah, it's just a darker line towards the bottom of the grading where you can see darker blue line.
No.
On the southwest corner of the the city line.
I know, but I think I.
And this is the, I guess, what I would call the alleyway, it goes up from between the properties?
Either put it in my mailbox or do leave it there.
The two yellow lines, are we all looking at the same thing here?
Yeah, that's the proposed alley, plotted alley.
That's. Yeah. No, you did, you did decide that that was a street, that's an extension of of Third Street or?
It's. Well, it was the former, it was a former street right of way, but but it's, yeah. It, part of it was vacated in the past and and sold off and that's part of this remaining city ownership.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, cuz up on the other side of Lynn Street, there's a house and a garage that would be sitting there.
Yeah. I think I think it was former Fourth Street, I think is what it was.
Or Fourth Street, yeah.
So these preliminary project costs that are within the packet that we received. Uh this retaining wall, is it based on the fifty foot or sixty foot structure?
This is, this is based on the fifty foot.
If if we went to the sixty foot structure. Is there enough, still enough there for grading along with the retaining wall?
It would require more retaining wall um.
But it's still doable on the site?
It is doable on the site, it just requires more retaining wall, therefore more cost, so we were, we were um, the primary driver was. When we were looking at kind of the ideal scenario, the sixty foot depth and and the retaining wall that wrapped from wrapped around. The the project, uh we were over the seven hundred thousand dollar mark. And at that mark, we have to do a referendum to do a bond that large, um under that mark, it we do not. So that was kinda my goal, was to get it below that mark and honestly as low as we can while getting a good structure, so. Right now, with what I had sent you, we're sitting right at six hundred thousand with a small stretch of retaining wall, mostly relying on grade work.
Tim.
In a fifty foot depth.
How long is that, this wall, you're trying, is that stretching the whole hundred and twenty-four feet of that building?
I don't know the exact length, it's it's really just on the south uh west corner of. Um of the property, so it's pretty, it's mostly sitting in that out in that corner right of way area.
Southwest. Oh, this is the, okay, that's the existing.
I have a question about this retaining wall on the south side. Okay, wouldn't that wall be part of the building? Why wouldn't you incorporate that wall into the building?
It's.
I have the same thought myself, why couldn't you have a?
Then you don't need a retaining wall, if you put a wall in there for your building.
Why you couldn't have an eight foot footing wall on the backside?
Exactly.
That's what concerns me about.
Or just put your building on top of it?
I'm not an engineer, but I but I, my understanding is, I mean, on that sort of hill, if you don't have. The support for your soil, then your building can give way and end up in Shaw Road. But I'm not an engineer, I'm not a, construction is not my forte, that's why.
But I think that was, the intent was the south wall to be part of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Not a retaining.
And that's, and that's how Jerry bid it, I mean, he knows there, he's been up there, and that's how he figured it out.
So is the, is that was the intent and who drew up the plan for the intent, some a company?
So so you guys are thinking to have a a concrete wall on the south side of that new section?
Yes.
Yeah, pour in footings and put up a wall.
Yes.
And use that wall as part of the building, the backside of the building.
Who made the plan? And and maybe that'll work a- and we can bring that and have that discussion with with the engineers, but I I can't say if that would work, I don't have the expertise.
Are we looking at specific building plans that show that, or is this in, is that what the plans say?
Well, we had, there was some preliminary plans that you had uh one of the contractor draw up and and.
Yeah.
I shared that with the engineers and they took that, I don't recall if that specifically designated the wall as.
I don't think. I don't think they understood that that wall would be.
No, no.
So so I mean, that could just be a communication, see if they think that will resolve the issue and maybe it will, but I I don't know.
Yeah.
But also, we could possibly be looking at the grade, the the slope of the hill after the building is erected. Could be so steep that it couldn't hold itself even with seed.
Well, essentially.
That would continue to erode away and fall into the adjoining property, that's what the retaining wall might be for. To continue to hold back the dirt as you go down the hill.
I don't think if you do the back wall, uh as your footing wall, whether it needs to be an eight or a ten foot or whatever it needs to be. You you could leave the existing grade as it is, that it's already movable.
Yeah, it's the mobile.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be changing that, so as far as your building comes out, you still have to keep a forty-eight foot inch frost footing, so you'll just.
Yes, I think that was a communication problem about that.
Can I, who did the, who drew up the plans?
I had a, there was a member, used to be a member of the fire department, made these, and all these basically are is just dimension plans. To to get started with.
Okay.
There's nothing, there's there's nothing in depth.
So even though we're talking and I think that's a great idea to do that footing as part of the building and I love that idea. As long as, for where I'm coming from, and I think the whole city should be coming from this aspect. As long as we have professionals like engineers or somebody who's gonna back it in case there's a problem.
Sure.
And the liability doesn't come on you guys or us guys, but I think that's great if the engineer would look at that and consider that, it would be awesome.
Can I ask a quick question? Your sewer runs out in front of uh Warner's. If you're further down over that hill, how you find out getting sewer up to that?
It's like fourteen foot deep.
It's quite a ways, I don't know how far down over the hill I have to.
There are two clean outs towards the southeast back of that building.
Are you gonna go further down over that hill then, is that your intention?
It looks gonna be up on top of the hill then.
I haven't seen the plan, so I'm just asking a question.
They.
We looked at it, we had the engineers outside, they looked at the sewer, so. Okay. They kinda know what they're looking for. I just don't want it to be a surprise.
There there should be, no. The the ten foot reduction in size of the building, you're good with that, Tim?
If I had to be, yes, but I would just assume it stayed at sixty feet instead of the fifty feet, was because of of uh our equipment needs and the size of trucks are starting to. Be anymore.
Is the rea- obviously the reason for the building because of the size of the struck, the trucks have is increased.
Yep.
You know, twenty years from now, we don't get to redo this.
No.
Just I'm, and I'm saying, you know, now might be the time to stay at sixty feet and absorb the cost.
Exactly, if if that's what it, you know, that's what it's gonna come down to.
I agree.
Um I would like to get in a little further, I don't wanna any of us to be dragging our feet, but I would like to get in a little further with this wall. To see if it's, to see if it's if it's really needed um. To see where we're at on Shavers land, what that's gonna take, um I guess I'll have to make a meeting with Mike and Nancy and and uh. See what their idea is.
Let Jacob in a sense coordinate that, or the between the two of you coordinate.
Yeah.
And maybe there'd be less communication to have everything go through the city hall in these meetings that you have with different people.
I've been, I've been trying to do that as much as I could with Jacob, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, that would cover a lot, and then that too, as he's meeting with engineers and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
There's no miscommunication of what exactly is being talked about.
I'm, I'm one of the, I'm probably one of the first ones that would ask about cost cuts in a project.
Not be any more than that.
Yeah.
Uh again, I I wanna give consideration to the sixty foot, Jacob, just because down the road, you know, you are. Your hands are gonna be tied, there's just gonna be very minimal you can do at that point, uh and and I do appreciate the fact that you tried to cut this. Turn this down to get it below that that line in the sand.
Just and I I generally agree too, I wanna build with a future in mind, um I don't, I don't have any problem with going sixty feet. If we do cross that threshold, um I don't know if we are in a position to, I I doubt that we're in a position to have a referendum this fall. So you're looking at next fall to vote, you're two years away from construction, just just putting that in perspective.
So is this figuring a complete build out of the building?
I'm sorry.
Is this a complete build out of the building, that six hundred thousand?
Uh yeah, that's.
Training room, workout room?
No, 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 it's just the, it's just the outside, it is not the interior rooms.
That's the.
It's the shell.
Well, it's a scope of services, general A. Maybe it just says for.
I don't know, could be easier to follow on this.
I think they've got, and again, I'm not, I'm not, this is a term I'm not familiar with, but I believe they're talking of the uh. I think the the missing wall that'll allow future construction for those rooms, but it just says plants for future dorm rooms and restrooms and training rooms.
Okay.
All they're really, they're planning to stub out the bathrooms, but no, no interior walls.
Right.
Exactly, that's correct.
That's what it says.
And if you wait until next year, the special action will cost, cuz you'll have it on the full cost, we've got it in there after.
Yeah. Yeah, we've elected.
What's the length of current equipment vehicles that you would be putting in this? Oh, what's our longest truck, it's thirty-five, thirty-four, six, thirty-four, three? The current truck as now.
Sure.
And then we've got two, two trucks that could be hooked to trailers that are just kind of jammed in there right now. And it does take precious time if we need them, both of those items, to get them out, so we'd like to have that space to have them. Possibly hooked up all the time or staged in line to be ready to be to be hooked up. Cause right now, we've got one trailer that's stuffed under a loft, we've got another trailer that sits outside. And the piece of equipment that goes on it sits in there kinda diagonally, um it's a real time constraint to put that all together if we can get.
So this is only their estimate cost though?
Yes.
You could still have a contractor that comes in quite a ways under that. Or not quite a ways, but you would have one.
Am I correct again, we would need to put that out for bid?
It would have to up for bid, yes.
And sealed bid?
Yes.
This uh, this six hundred thousand that you're talking, is that just for that wall, or is that the building? Of the information that I've given you plus the wall?
Yeah, it's it's the whole project as described.
Okay, okay.
It's not, like like we were saying, it's not the interior wall, but it's it's the building, it's the extension of the parking lot by.
Yep.
You've got grading and a small portion of the wall, of of a retaining wall.
No, no. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And here's our outline for the building, right?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Alright, that was, that was confusing me, so the six hundred thousand or whatever is.
Turnkey.
Yeah, aside from, aside from the one corner of the building that's for future, for future use, yeah.
With the way the fire service is going, you will probably need to have full time here, within ten years.
I think that would be wonderful, and I.
And that's not mandated by us, I'm probably about the state.
Correct, in which case, am I correct if that happens? Because the next step I would like to see a conversation take place is, everybody's homeowner's insurance has a fire clause. You pay for fire department to come to your house, when we had the fire downtown here, I mentioned to my insurance company, look here, you need to cut our fire department this check. And they wouldn't do it unless the fire department would bill them, but the fire department here doesn't bill.
No.
So there could, there's a whole untapped amount of money that needs to be going to you guys.
No, and I. And I I don't know the right answer for that, but I had talked to uh Al before about billing. And he says, the way things stand right now, we cannot, it it would be a a system that would have to go through. You guys several different times to uh to do that, because we are, we are tax based and.
I would like to see a conversation and research done between you and you, Jacob, to figure out. How we can make something like that happen and get the money you guys are earned to you, because we have to pay it in our insurance. It's not à la carte, it's not like I can say our fire department won't collect on that, so I'm not paying it, I pay it regardless. So there sits that money that you guys should be getting.
And then there's, we have our yearly budget meeting, so you know, like I I would assume whatever we get. In our budget meeting comes from different different places like that, but to answer your question, no, we cannot charge, but.
But if you were a full-time department?
That would change.
That would change it.
Yeah, that would change things dramatically.
Yes, then you could charge, is what I was finding out, so anyway, not to get off the subject, but if we want money to build this building.
But you did.
It'd be nice to research and see what we can't do about that.
Can we move forward seeing what the cost would be without the retaining wall and the back wall of the buildings? Tell me what.
The support.
With the support?
Yeah, I mean, I can talk to the engineers, see what what they think.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like our contractors are confident that it can be done.
So then we could stay with the sixty foot, if that's the case.
Depending on the price, yeah.
Here's Jacob, what I would be looking at is coming back to the council with two proposals, one at the fifty foot, one at the sixty foot. And resolve this retaining wall, it's actually required or not, uh that could be enough to. Get it below the referendum cut line, you know, again, maybe, maybe it won't be either, uh but.
At least then we'll know.
Get the numbers in front of us.
Yeah.
I would say the fire department on. I would say the fire department are certainly in support of this project. But like everything else, it's, uh, dollars and cents.
Absolutely. I understand that.
So the sixty-two thousand dollars, does that have to be part of the seven hundred? Or can that be in addition? Engineering fees fall under that? Almost could cut sixty-two thousand out of it to keep it under there if we had to.
It's whatever you're bonding for.
Did you hear her?
What's that?
It's whatever you're bonding for. If, if, if you're gonna use money for reserves to pay for part of it, that's fine.
Right.
But if you're going over that dollar amount for bonding, then no, we ask for the public.
Okay.
Alright, so you guys want Jacob to redo?
We'll coordinate. We've other options. Look at that.
Sure.
Alright.
Putting wall or whatever.
Keep in touch with Tim, cause he seems like he was a little bit out of it and was a little behind.
Well, Dale is here. Keep in mind, that whole lot is bedrock. So if you build something, I don't think it's gonna be sliding anywhere. In fact, I believe when the fire station was built now, they had moved it up, uh, twelve inches? Because they couldn't do it down there for where it sits right now. So I'm not saying that the outside dimensions are that dense of rock. I don't know. All they know is it's just a rocky hill.
Hopefully the south side of it's not a sand pit.
Basically then, you're saying we probably need to do some core samples to find out what's there.
Make sure what's there.
There's not much soil to slough off.
Alright, so.
Definitely a unique piece of property.
So we'll let Jacob work on that with the engineers and that. Alright.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Eight point oh, public safety. Eight point one, motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor license, renewal of class C liquor license with. Sunday sale privileges, hot shots, bar and grill.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Betty, second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Eight point two, discussion and possible action on a street closure request to close South Booth Street from East Main Street to. First East West Alley located behind Tucker's Tavern on June twenty-second, twenty nineteen from twelve. PM noon to twelve AM midnight for the annual. Write it like you stole it, man.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty.
Have the property owners been contacted and are they on board with this?
She's on the chamber.
I don't, I don't think there's any property owners that are affected except for Tucker's and Mike Dearborn. So I'm assuming that they're on board with it. She didn't give me a list or a map. So.
Do we usually ask for that or, or not?
We usually do, yes, but she didn't provide it, so. She's been called. I don't know what else.
I see that there's a bold red note about barricades to be picked up. Don't we drop those off and make them available?
Yes. If, if they want them, we drop them off and they set them up and put them back to the side when they're done.
That's different than what it says here.
Yeah, barricades are to be picked up.
At the city shop.
Yeah.
Right, but they, technically they should pick them up, but the guys are just usually pretty good about bringing them to it. It depends on what type of barricade you're talking about.
Well, regardless of what type of barricade it is. I feel that if this, uh, hosting group would prefer to have the barricades dropped off at the, at the area. That we certainly could accommodate that.
I would agree. We always ask them, how do you prefer it and what type of barricades?
And I'm not discounting Tammy. I'm just going by what's written here in bold red letters.
If you just came and didn't know.
The, the main question is, is do you want barricades from the city? The fee is different. Whether you pick them up or we drop them off, we try, we try and work with them. We kinda leave that up for grabs. But the fee is different with the barricades. That's the main thing.
Somehow you may wanna word this a little differently then.
In the future. I don't, I don't remember this being there a year ago. Maybe it was.
It's always been there. It's been the original document since we started this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Eight point three, discussion and possible action on request to hold Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Starting nine thirty AM, beginning at Huber Street and Main Street, taking a direct route to the Riverside Cemetery. While where Memorial Day Services will be held, including a gun rally salute.
So moved.
Second.
First by Kay, second by Rich. Any discussion?
I would, I'd like to let you know, uh, yes, my once a year visit, Becky Derrt Hogsden, the Commander of the FSW, for those who don't know me. Um, we're excited about the events that are taking place. Our guest speaker is retired Colonel Todd Jopovis. From the Iowa National Guard. He was the chairman of the Iowa Veterans Affairs Committee for many years. So we're excited about him coming to visit us and honor us with his presence. Um, we have a program going with the Girl Scouts. Uh, similar to the, uh, distribution of flags to all the veterans graves. The Girl Scouts are gonna be working with, um, the Chamber, the Eagles and the veterans groups to distribute flowers. To a lot of the graves that in the past have been had. So we're hoping to kinda get back to the roots of Decoration Day. And, uh, honor a lot of the folks that have, you know, been long gone. A lot of the founders of the town and everything often don't have flowers on their graves. So we hope to rectify that issue with the program that's now. So if there's any other questions, I think most of you are familiar with the. Ceremonial and events that we have.
Thanks, Becky.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There are motions, second?
All in favor?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Nine point oh, public works none. Ten point oh, finance. Ten point one, discussion and possible action on request by Dean wants to purchase section of right of way adjacent to, to eighteen East Main Street. White Pickett on Main.
I had a second request in writing. I don't see Dean in the audience.
So did we ever resolve who owned that triangle piece?
I guess I didn't wanna sink a whole lot of time into it if it wasn't there going where, which is where we left off last meeting, but.
Okay.
I, I certainly wouldn't have to go forward with it. I just.
Get a mixed signals.
Well, I got the impression that he wants to move faster than we can actually move on this deal. And especially if we don't know who owns that triangle piece, that creates a problem. So.
And it's more complicated than I'll take down the tree and you give me the land.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah.
So there's really not much to.
Not much to discuss.
Okay.
Alright. So, no motion or anything on that. Ten point two, discussion and possible action on request by Pat Hesser to purchase South Cedar Street right of way.
Hello, everybody.
Aye.
So I own currently the property on both sides of the, uh, the street that was never incorporated on, uh. Up there by Vine and Cedar and Cherry. Um. I don't think that was ever gonna build, or probably maybe put a street here there at this point, since already after that road was vacated. There was another thing that was, uh, originally a part of the deed before, uh, my, my wife and I bought the property. Thirty foot of that right of way was actually in the original deed. It's going back. Uh, as a deed recorded, uh, in the courthouse, uh, from nineteen fifty. Before that, uh, there was no record or evidence that, that road. That, that thirty by approximately three hundred foot piece of land was ever given. To that property owner at that time, whether it was the people that lived there in the early eighteen hundreds, which was the Bean family. Or, uh, the people that shortened it there after was the Sealy family. So somewhere in course, uh, a timeline, they acquired half of that city's right of way. And to my knowledge, the only way that that was ever acquired is when the city eminent domained. Part of Cherry Street. So when that was probably eminent domained, I'm, I'm taking a good guess at it when the road, road was put through. When the new bridge is there now, that there was a bridge there previously. So they had to take this thirty feet out of the front part of that personal property. And it was a land tranction made, whether it was recorded in city records, was never recorded. In, in the quarter's office of Joe's cap. So naturally, the thirty feet was beaded back to the city. Uh, on the last, uh, legal file ceremony. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that up. But, uh, just to take into consideration. So it has been on the quarter's book. Has written in as it was a hundred and sixteen foot wide parcel, uh, instead of an eighty-six foot wide parcel. So it, and it goes way back for, uh, nineteen hundred. But there's no, there's no record of it, so. Uh, the engineer had to revert that thirty feet back to the city. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But I do, would like to purchase that, that space because, um. It, it doesn't devalue, uh, the ability to have a street there because, uh, there, there's buildable lots. On, on both sides of Cherry and Vine Street, so it's just, you know. It's just right in the middle of two pieces of land that I have. It's better than bringing together, have one parcel.
Is this parcel we're talking about? Cause I know you're looking at the thirty feet by how many feet?
I think I gave, uh.
Yeah.
I gave them that.
So.
I'm sorry.
Is this one L-shaped parcel? Like if you look on the accessory side, it goes this way and this way.
Okay, so this parcel here.
Yeah.
And all these parcels right here are mine, right?
Yeah.
So originally, uh, this was never on the beacon. Uh, the, this, this showed always as sixty foot.
Right.
But, uh, if you, uh, if you actually.
You have the picture, Cody. What I'm asking is, is this and this one L-shaped? Okay, Cody. So if this here is an L-shaped.
We'll get to the right place here, Pat.
Right there beside your house, like where your driveway is? And it goes out to Vine Street this way?
There's other property owner here.
That says park place down there.
Oh.
Uh, this is Vine.
This is all here.
Nope, just this, this section here. And there's this piece on the other side of it.
Oh, so this.
This is a different owner.
Alright, never mind that.
Right, yep, different owner, yep.
I was.
Oh, and by the way, I own that triangle too.
Yeah, I like that.
So, could he, I mean, could we sell him all the way to Vine Street though?
Because there, this is a different property owner.
No, because, because that property has to have access to.
He only owns this and this. He doesn't own this.
So, so what it is, is, is that.
Do you see?
Okay, so if you look at the house, okay, there's a garage there now. That originally was Cedar Street all the way down through here. Originally. Okay, so this cannot go anywhere. So Cedar technically went all the way straight through. Vine ended right here at the edge.
Right, and you own these two, not this.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's clarification we needed. Thank you. Thanks, Jacob.
I'm currently trying to work with the state right now.
Hold on, when, did you just sell it?
Yeah, it was just split.
Okay.
Cause it.
It's not, it's not showing on.
Beacon hasn't updated, that's why I asked if you.
Oh, so it shows the owner?
Actually, it should show an offset.
Patrick Hesser.
It's not.
Yeah, you, yeah, the offset's there, yep. It's shown as the current.
It's not updated the ownership yet.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, it's only two weeks.
Takes a while for it to show up on the upset.
Well, I was gonna sell you land you don't need then.
We should anyway. Um, I think it makes sense.
Well, it's never gonna be used as a street.
Yeah, it never.
So I'm okay with it.
Calling us and saying we need to come mow our grass over there either.
Um, if, if you guys are generally in favor, we'll have to decide. I mean, there has been some past precedent to do twenty-five cents a square foot. That may not be a true market value today, so we could ask for a, uh. It wouldn't have to be a full appraisal, but, but kind of a professional opinion on, on the market value or, or we could stick with that precedent. Um, if, if you're comfortable with that. I did look, can't remember the exact number, but. I looked at the square footage just off a beacon for that triangle piece that he owns on the north side of Cherry. And if you swapped it out with the square foot, square footage on Cedar, the Cedar Street right of way is. Like twelve thousand five hundred square feet left, once you deducted that. And so that'd give you a nice even, even number too.
Actually, right now I'm working with the state of Iowa with that triangle.
Yeah.
Because that actually blocks the driveway. So I'm, I'm looking to do a land swap.
Yeah, cause I, I was looking at that and that's.
Well, again, if, if the city obtained it, it would just become.
Say, probably, yeah, right, right.
It, it, but, but either way, I mean, if you don't wanna, if you don't include that, that doesn't bother me.
Well, I, I don't see any reason to have that triangle. I really don't because the state owns everything. That street that runs down through there is on state property. So I don't see any reason to even have that triangle.
Let the state deal with it?
Yep.
Right, and my goal was to trade the, that triangle for the land behind it. I know it's a bigger, greater piece of land, but it is a swamp back there on Buckland. And that actually goes all the way across their driveway, so. Hopefully they'll, they'll, you know, since they have to put it on market and they have to put it up for auction, you know, or to, to, to sell the property. I'm trying to work a land swap just to trade the property so they don't have a blockage to their, their driveway, so. But I, I do wanna reiterate the fact that, you know, I mean, half of that street was, you know, pretty much. A part of this, this property for many, many years. Um, and I'd love to have that taken into consideration. You know, you know, as of the deed from, uh, nineteen fifty.
Just to cover all bases, we don't have any utilities on that property in any format, do we?
We don't have any, um. Si- uh.
Mains.
Mains, no. Um, there are, there is a water and sewer that, no, the water runs at Vine Street.
Yeah.
I think it's sewer to the. I think the sewer to those properties runs across, on a private line, across, um, that lot from Cherry Street. But again, it's not city-owned.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure we're covering our bases.
Yeah, I acquired today too, Rich, and I was informed there was one there.
Yep.
Yeah, the sewer line actually goes right through the middle of the smaller lot, and it goes all the way down to Cherry Street.
I think there's a cleanup over by Sealy somewhere from right, back, right path.
Well, I mean, there's, there's two of them down there, but the, I mean, that, that sewer line is, is due to be replaced within the next two years anyway. It's, it's that old oil picture. So it's.
So would you have to get with Adrian or whoever, get something, write nothing, come up with a purchase price? And like, what would the next step be?
Uh, just what you guys want to do in terms of setting the purchase price, if you want to follow the past precedent twenty-five cents a square foot? If you'd like a, uh, market rate kind of study, um.
What does that come to? For that lot, for twenty-five cents a square foot? Do you just figure it?
I have a rough estimate if you want.
Well, I.
Three thousand?
It was, it, when I deducted the triangle, it was just over three thousand. It would be a little bit more if you added that back in, um. And I was just measuring off the beacon, it's not a perfect, uh.
Right.
Three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars, right around there. Then fifteen thousand four hundred.
And you'd have to have a public hearing.
I'm, I'm okay with the twenty-five cents a square foot to get it back.
I'm good with the twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
Just.
So I made the motion, we go ahead and get the ball rolling at twenty-five cents a square foot and get the city to withdraw.
Then I'll, I'll talk with Adrian, we'll get, I'm sure we do all the legal processes for it.
Yeah. We'll have to get abstracts made and things done. So it, it won't happen next week.
I'm, I'm going to assume we don't have to have it surveyed.
That's how we're gonna do it.
Has it? Okay.
And the purchaser usually pays for legal and publication cost.
Yep.
Along with the twenty-five cents, just for clarification.
Yep, do the standard how we normally do it.
Yep, it was, that, that has been on top of the twenty-five, but that, I don't think it'll be a huge addition.
Usually four hundred bucks.
So first by Betty.
I'll second it.
Second by Rich. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. There you go, as soon as we get things all.
Thanks Pat.
Getting closer than.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks Pat.
Yep.
Ten point three, discussion and possible action on resolution appointing sergeant for the Animal Police Department and setting salary for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
The updated resolution was, uh, put out in front of you. G point nine, uh, conferred on our selection for officer Nick Rollcall.
And his position would take effect immediately upon our approval? Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Rich. Any discussion? And it's a roll vote.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty? Yes. Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Ten point four, discussion and possible action on resolution consenting to assignment of trustee agent agreement, escrow agent agreements, and our paying agent, Rich Distra, transfer agent agreements.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. Any discussion? And it's a roll vote.
Betty? Yes. Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Ten point five, discussion and possible action on resolution approving the hiring and setting salary of seasonal part-time employee for the Animal Sockle Court for the upcoming season.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
First by Rich, second by Kay. And it's a roll vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty? Yes.
Eleven point oh, city administrators report.
Uh, just a couple things. Wrapped up, essentially wrapped up employee evaluations, the department heads will be meeting it. Either have or will be meeting it for, uh, departmental employees next week or so. Richard will look back, uh, to sign copies for me. Um, I think it was a good process. We'll kind of learn from it and develop it next year, kind of what we, uh, saw as, as it turned out. Um, one other thing, if you, if you haven't noticed, we have a water main break on Third Street, um.
Why are you late?
And, uh, when I was last there, um, not too long before our meeting, we were having issues finding with the break. So hopefully they've made some progress since then, but, uh, somewhere the water is traveling underground and it's, we're having a hard time find, finding the leak, so it could be a long project. That's all I've got.
Can you, uh,
Oh.
fill us in a little bit on three ten West Main Street? And how that process is going with the merit property?
Um, so, the court ruled in the city's favor, so he's been court ordered to clean it up.
Yay.
I don't have the exact date that he was given by, by the court to have that cleaned up. But once we get there, um, uh, it, it'll really be working with the court on how we enforce that. It could become a second citation in terms of contempt of court, but that's really something I want to work with our attorney and, and, uh, the court on.
This, i- in my opinion, is really kind of a benchmark on, on how we proceed with other properties like this, so. I feel it's in our best interest to stay ahead of it and have a plan. So when we get to day thirty, that we continue moving forward on it. I've received a couple calls about the Boots property in the last month, um.
Lots of conversation.
And I.
That one seems to be a yearly ongoing thing also.
And I let this person know that, um, depending on how hard you attack this, really shows how hard we'll attack the next one and, and how far we can take it. So. And really, we just need to take it until it gets cleaned up.
I like that we're being more aggressive than previous.
So at day thirty, with the merit property, do we send in people to clean it up? Do we hire a contractor? Are they contempt of court?
We have to, yeah, work on that with, with the attorney and what our rights are at that point and what the best
I'm not sure.
practice would be.
I'm not sure we can go and enter property and start removing stuff.
We, we may be able to, but it, it's definitely gotta be done carefully, reviewed, and to make sure that we're doing things properly.
We need to do that ahead of time, so when we get to day thirty?
It happens.
We're, we're doing it.
We've got the plan, we're not waiting.
I don't want to make a plan at day thirty-one. I want a plan at day ten, so that we can push through it. So if you could find out how much time he has left from today on that, that would be great. And then what, you meet with Adrian on Wednesday morning.
Thanks. Um, we, we will, we will work on a plan. Uh, I'll, I'll figure out what, what that date is that, that it would do on, uh, by the court. The last thing that I was about to forget was that I'm going on a vacation, so I won't be meeting with Adrian this week. Uh, but, uh, I will correspond events in the email, give it, and, and working on it. And, uh, when we meet sometime next week, uh, we'll, we'll go from there.
Has any progress been made? Has he started cleaning anything up, or?
I, I, I haven't documented anything, uh, but just for my, I, I think things maybe have moved around, but not really cleaned up.
Like Cody said, we gotta start putting some teeth into it when you do this, not wait till the end and, like Boots has been how many years with that and they do a little and then just stop. It needs to be done and move forward for everybody.
Most of the habitual nuisance properties do enough to make it, for the city to move on to something else and then they stop.
Well, then that's on us for not going back.
Oh, I agree.
And checking and setting the benchmarks instead of just saying, oh, well, you started and we walk away.
Yep, and I can honestly say that I feel our current police chief and our current city administrator have been a lot more aggressive on this issue than in the previous we've had. So I'm pleased to see progress.
But we gotta keep pushing.
Yeah.
Alright, that was all Jacob had.
Yep.
Twelve point oh, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions. Had the landfill on Tuesday and, uh, we're still having problems getting rid of tires. We're back to home. Paying big dollars to get rid of them in Des Moines Liberty Tire. So we're seeing about sending our old loans down with the cheaper.
When you find a company that spreads over mixed playgrounds?
We had an alternate place that we were taking them to, and he, uh, quit corresponding with us. Oh, I think someplace up in Cascade, they were, uh, I don't know what they were doing, but.
Got connections there man?
You're speechless?
I don't know what's transpiring.
Well, it was a pretty good place for us to get rid of there for a while. So. And that's about it for mine. Anybody else? Alright, thirteen oh, public with business with accounts on items not on the agenda. Oops, they're all gone. Fourteen oh, closed session.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session per Iowa State Code, Section twenty-one point five, aye.
Second.
First by Rich to go into closed session, second by Cody. Thanks Jeremiah.